The time and presence of a quorum, I now call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Welcome, everyone. We have a bit of an atypical agenda tonight. We will have public participation. We will have a brief presentation by Arnav Meera, who is our, one of our high school student reps. And I have invited Dorothy Presser here, who is the Field Director at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and one of the lead facilitators of their district governance program, here to talk to us about the superintendent evaluation process. After that, we will have a few business matters to attend to. Okay, before I get started, I want to briefly share with you some thinking that I have been doing around our meeting space. Back in November of 2017, the members of the school committee, who were then on school committee, which is not everybody here, met with Dr. Rob Evans. He is a clinical and something called an organizational psychologist who focuses on change management, and met with us. He's actually very, he's very well-known and speaks, he gives courses at Edco, and he speaks at many schools and districts. And during, during the workshop, we had a very interesting conversation about the size of the school committee, and specifically how our size impacts our ability to be effective and efficient. So, one of the outcomes of that workshop was to, was a recommendation to consider what changes can we make to the physical space that we meet in? In order to increase our ability to like make timely, well-informed decisions? Because in a very basic way, it's very difficult with 11 people to, to get to deliberate efficiently, even preparing and get answers to questions thoughtfully. It takes a great deal of time, and it's hard to get to know one another. So, one of, one of the, one of the comments that someone made there is, is like when there's a split vote, in the absence of like a relationship, that can be very divisive, or divisive, however you say that. And it can undermine our ability to work together. So this whole question of how can we change the, the space that we meet in? So that it impact, the idea behind this is that changing the space design can impact how we interact. So I just wanted to float this out and get a sense of the committee whether you might want this as a future agenda item. We did talk quite a bit about it, and I know not all of you were there, but we have, and I've given some thought to how to change this space around, and I would love to talk about it with the full committee, some of the merits and the drawbacks of that. So, Amy?
I do remember having that conversation, and I think that a lot of the things that Rob brought up were, I feel like could have a pretty powerful impact on us. And so I would definitely like to have that conversation.
Maya?
I, I would too. I think what he, everything that he said that day made sense, and we all said that we would revisit this, we just haven't had a chance to. And if it could impact how we work together, I, I would support spending time on this. In addition, the other thing that we said that day is that we would like to have Rob Evans back, and I would like to put a plug in for that and, and ask if the committee would be interested in that, or if you, if you would like to discuss that at a future meeting.
Okay, do I have a, I'm, I'm seeing nods, so I'm gonna take that as a yes, that I'll consider that for a future agenda item. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say also, I've put in a plug for Rob coming back.
I just want to remind everyone also that we are being recorded tonight by ACTON TV. This is a time in our meeting when we invite members of the public up for two minutes on items not on the agenda. Is there any, anybody wishes to speak? Please come up. Yep, so I'm gonna invite you to come up to the podium where there's a microphone, and then everyone can hear you. Okay, sorry, I should've said that.
So I'm also recording with your permission.
Okay. Is that microphone on?
Um, yeah, so, so I am also recording with your permission to do so.
Okay, and if you would just state your name and your town.
Thank you. Okay, so my name, my name is Corey Spalding, and I'm from Framingham, Massachusetts, and I'm here with my daughter Sarah Catherine's permission to speak about a situation that you are aware of. I'm going to read from a prepared statement, and I'm so sorry, this is so incredibly difficult for me, but... "In February 2017, NADIC's Assistant Finance Director Doug Diaz interviewed and was a finalist for the AB Finance Director position. At an interview, he confirmed that the NADIC schools, which is where my daughter was attending, were embezzling funds. My understanding is this was in the millions of dollars from federal, state, and private nonprofit grants. I was told this firsthand from an eyewitness at the interview. I'm aware that Ms. Alteri, you were also present. I had, in 2014, I had become questioning the finances of the NADIC school committee, and they retaliated against my child severely. First, they excluded her. They denied her accommodations. My daughter was so abused that she required 30 days of hospitalization, and she went mute. The AG, Maria Healy, is fully aware and complicit, as is Governor Charlie Baker. In fact, his child advocate, Maria Masidis, threatened to remove my child if I didn't stop questioning the financial practices of the NADIC school committee. I have filed a complaint with the FBI and the Department of Justice, who has jurisdiction over public schools and the Department of Ed for failing to protect a child from harm, in public corruption, embezzlement. So per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 66, Section 10, I'm requesting all documents related to the job interview in which Mr. Diaz confirmed the embezzlement, and who, if anybody, from the AB School Committee, School Department, reported this."
Thank you, Ms. Spalding, that's, that's two minutes.
So that was a public records request.
Okay.
I will be back in two weeks to, to have that. Thank you very much.
Item number four on our agenda is a student representative update. We have Arnav Meera here, who is our student rep from the high school.
Hi, everyone, just in case, there you go. Hi, everyone, just in case you don't know me, my name is Arnav Meera, and I am currently a senior at the high school. So today, I would like to briefly discuss some of the major trends and updates that are happening at the high school, as well as a suggestion brought to me by members of the athletic community. So first and foremost, regarding seniors, which would include me, this is a pretty stressful time here in October, because our first deadline is November 1st. Luckily, even though there is a lot of stress hanging around our heads, the counseling department has been pretty helpful in this manner. Every Friday, they've had these, basically sessions every lunch period where we can go and show our Common App, S A R Common App, and our supplements to counselors, who are more than willing to help. And I think that's really helped a lot of my constituents, as they've told me. So, and furthermore, parents have also had the opportunity to attend the college, the college, Vol College Night, as well as the financial aid night, so that's helped parents in understanding the process as well. Furthermore, besides the senior situation, I would like to elaborate on what Michael kind of talked about the last meeting regarding start times. I've talked to a lot more constituents about the issue, and they really, really like start times. They think that it's really important to their well-being, they've been able to get more sleep. And a lot of members of the athletic community have also told me that despite their previous concerns last year, that this could affect their practices overall. For the most part, I've been hearing that it hasn't altered their practices too much, so it's been pretty positive. Thirdly, regarding extracurriculars, besides the great 65 clubs and activities we already have, this year, we have a total of new, nine new clubs. To name one example, we have the Girls and Sciences Club, which helps encourage girls in the junior high and the high school to go into STEM. So I would like to thank you for continuing to support our extracurriculars, and I'm looking for a great future regarding that matter. So the last thing I would like to discuss with you guys is something that's been brought to me by a lot of student athletes in regards of the expansion of the fitness center. So currently in the status quo, a lot of student athletes use the fitness center that we have for lifting weights, which is critical for muscular strengthening, as well as overall athletic performance. And one constituent actually told me that after the track and field teams started using the facilities more and more, they actually noticed an increase in their success. In fact, just this past summer, I believe four members went to a national tournament and did fairly well. So the lifting program has really been beneficial to athletic teams. Unfortunately, many people have complained that it's been overused and overcrowded. So on behalf of all student athletes, I humbly request you to consider the issue whenever you're discussing budgetary allocations. That's all, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Arnav. Item number five is the superintendent evaluation workshop. Just to put this in context, I'm gonna read to you policy CBI, which is a superintendent evaluation. The purpose of the superintendent evaluation is to promote excellence in the leadership of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District through feedback, self-reflection, and a growth mindset. The school committee, our policy says, will evaluate the superintendent annually, following the process standards and rubric outlined by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, their educator evaluation system, particularly for superintendents. The evaluation process will include an opportunity for feedback from staff and community members. Superintendent will work with the school committee to set up professional practice, student learning, and district goals, which you'll learn about tonight, based on the needs of the school system. This is a major component of our job as a school committee, and a very important way that we contribute to keeping the district moving forward in a spirit of ongoing continuous improvement. So I welcome Dorothy Presser to walk us through the superintendent evaluation process.
Thank you very much, and you just stole my entire introduction, so. Okay, thank you, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to review with you the evaluation process for the superintendent. As, as Diane said, this is something that comes from regulations around educator evaluation. And just to put it in the framework, I goofed it again, didn't I? Just to put it in the framework, the next slide will show you, how the superintendent evaluation fits into the alignment of all the goals in the district. Okay, am I not close enough? Is it okay now? Okay. So I just want to talk a little, for a moment, about how the superintendent evaluation fits into all the goals in the district. So you have a district plan, overarching goals, a district strategy, whatever you may call it here, and all the goals that flow from that should align back to that with the ultimate goal of continuous improvement and student achievement, as you define it for the students in your district. So if you have school committee goals, the superintendent goals, the school improvement plans, should all align back to that district plan, and then following that, administrator goals, classroom goals, down into the classroom, all aligned back to furthering the plan of the district. Makes sense? As Diane mentioned, there is an evaluation system that is regulated by the state, came out of the, the achievement gap legislation of 2011, and the, the idea of having this model for all licensed educators was to make the evaluation system more related to student achievement, and relate it, and relate it to multiple educator success, to have educators, instead of it being maybe sort of a dog and pony show that people referred to it before, to have it actually tied to student success, and to help educators grow in their practice. And when it's done well, this is actually a much more objective and less subjective evaluation process than what many school committees had in the past. There are some elements that are required, and some elements of this, of the system that are adaptable, that you're able to adapt within the district, and I'll talk about all that as we go through. It does require greater attention to the evaluation system than in the past, and actually, if you pay a lot of attention to the process at the beginning, it will help everything in the process happen that much more smoothly as you go through the process. Some components of this may be new to members of the committee who were on the committee before this, this new model came about, and if you came on after, it's probably all new to you. There are annual evaluations required in most cases, and I think in many cases, the district, as you read your policy, the, the district requires the annual process at the district level, and really the community expects to have that annual evaluation of the superintendent. And as I said, there are elements that are required, and there are certain places where you can adapt it to meet your local needs, and I'll talk about all that as we go through. So there are three key components to the evaluation model. The first is a five-step cycle, the second is a two-part tool, and the third is a multi-part rating system. So we'll go through each of those key components, and then I'll talk about how it all works when it all gets put together. So in the five-step cycle, it starts and ends with a self-assessment. With a superintendent who's new to the district, that's a little bit different, that, that self-assessment really becomes more of what is the entry plan, or the entry plan findings, and that's what the goals are gonna be based on. Then, as the superintendent has been here a while, and has goals that he's worked on for a year, then that self-assessment becomes a little more important in the process. Once that, once the groundwork is laid to think about what makes sense for the goals, then the goals are created, a plan is created, and then that plan is implemented. Partway through the year, there's a formative assessment. This is not a written assessment, it's just really a discussion item on an agenda at a school committee meeting. And hopefully, if you're thinking about the evaluation all the way through, you're really getting updates and understanding how the goals are being implemented all the way through the year, and it's not just something you think about at the end, briefly in the middle, and then, and at the beginning, briefly in the middle, and then at the end. But then, at the end of the process, there is a summative evaluation, that's the public evaluation, written evaluation of the superintendent, that is ultimately voted on by the school committee. So that's the five-part cycle. Then there's the two-part tool. The first part of the tool is SMART goals. You may be familiar, you probably are, with the acronym of SMART, specific and strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results-focused, and timed and tracked. SMART goals also have key actions and benchmarks, so you know what steps are going to happen during the course of the year, and you know when they're gonna happen. There are three goal areas that need to be covered in the, in the goals that are created. There needs to be one professional practice goal, one student learning goal, and two district improvement goals, as a, as a minimum. Sometimes there's more, but we always caution not to have too many goals, because if you have too many, it's really gonna be hard to accomplish them. So that's the first part of the tool. The second part of the tool is the standards and indicators of effective professional practice. I think you all had in your packet, the, the rubric, it's, it's referred to as the rubric from the state. It's kind of an overwhelming document, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. There are four standards: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And this, again, this rubric comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So you have your goals and your standards that you're evaluating the superintendent on. The rubric is structured as a continuum of professional practice. So it starts with the standards. Each standard then is further broken down into an indicator, which is then further broken down into an element. And for every element, there is a descriptor that shows what that element looks like when it's put into practice, from an unsatisfactory up to an exemplary level. Here's an example of one of the, one of the, going down to the element level. So the standard is instructional leadership. Under instructional leadership, curriculum falls under instructional leadership, so there's a brief description of curriculum, and then part of curriculum is standard-based unit design. So it will demonstrate what, or state what standard-based unit design looks like from an unsatisfactory level up to an exemplary level. If you look at that rubric, everything that is in proficient is in bold. That's because the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wants to emphasize that proficient is a high and very acceptable level of practice. And if you notice exemplary, very often, it's almost exactly the same descriptor as proficient, or very similar, and always ends in is able to model this element. So is, is the superintendent or the educator doing it at a level that becomes a model for others to follow? The idea when this was created was that proficient would be used, or that exemplary would be used on a very, very limited level, that it really was a, an above and beyond level of practice for, for any educator to be, to reach that exemplary level. So the third part of the process, or the tool, is the rating system. There's a summative performance rating on the goals, that goes from did not meet up to exceeded. There is a summary performance rating on the standards, that goes from unsatisfactory up to exemplary, and then an overall summative rating that combines the two, that again goes from unsatisfactory up to exemplary. That makes sense? So the, just to review, the, the three key components are the five-step cycle, the two-part tool, and the multi-part rating system. So before I go on to how it works, does anybody have any questions? Yes?
It's not actually a question, it's a comment. I think that they really define well, the, in the rubric, like the standards for each level. I am a bit annoyed at the, the actual sheet we use for rating, that proficient is made so big to stand out, and I would encourage people, I mean, to me, that screams, check this box, check this box! And I think you need to use the rubric and rate the, the person appropriately, you know, where they fall on the rubric, and ignore that large print.
Well, there is actually no requirement that you use that, that document. If you want to create your own that's easier to use, or adapt it somehow, you're welcome to do so. So that's their sort of template, but you're not required to use that. Any, yes?
One, one thing that may be worth talking a little bit about, you put up a sample element with the various performance levels. Could you just talk a little bit, would a school committee expect to see evidence of practice in every one of the elements on that rubric?
I'm gonna get to that, but since you're asking, no. In fact, we highly suggest that you not use every single element. You will drive yourself nuts if you try to do it. People have tried, they've been nuts. So I'll talk a little bit more about how the goals and the standards fit together as I go through how it works. Okay. So at the beginning of the process, you're going to create an evaluation document. You're gonna work with the superintendent to draft the goals, and we really talk about drafting the goals first, as the first step, because the goals really are what make it unique to your district, and what's going to drive your district forward. So that is a very important part, maybe perhaps the most important part of the, of the, of the, between the goals and the standards, because that's really, again, your, what makes it yours, what makes it Acton-Boxborough's. You can use a subcommittee to begin this work, sort of the idea that it's maybe easier for a smaller group of people to do the drafting and the, and the wordsmithing and so forth, but the school committee has the final approval on the goals. So actually, according to the legislation, if the evaluator, which is the school committee, and the evaluator, E, which is the superintendent, don't agree on the goals, it's the evaluator who prevails. But I've never heard of it not being a collaborative process with the superintendent and the school committee to get to the goals that end up being the ones approved to go forward with. So after you've gotten the goals, then go into the, the standards and, and identify the elements that you want to use. We really suggest that you limit the number of elements that you pick to maybe eight to 12, so that you, and you look at the goals, and you pick the elements that are most related to the goals that you pick. Does that make sense? The trick is that you have to rate all the standards. So as you're going and picking the smaller number of elements to use, just make sure that you have a representation of each standard. Does that answer your question? Okay. Once you've done that, you can decide on the weighting of the standards. I have to say, I've been doing this for a number of years in a lot of districts, and I've never found one that decided to weight any standard differently than another. But if you think about it, there are four standards, so they would all be weighted at 25%. If there's some reason in a certain year that some, one of those standards you feel deserves extra attention, then you can decide to weight it further, and that would come out in the overall rating of the standards. That would impact the overall rating of the standards, as you look at how all four are rated. Again, I've never found a district that did it, and you also have to remember that if you rate one higher, then you have to decide to rate one lower, because you have to end up with 100% in the end. Makes sense? This is in red, discussing the artifacts of evidence, because I think it's really important, and this is where I say, do a lot of work at the beginning, 'cause it'll make it easier at the end. If you read through a lot of the standards, you might be thinking, I don't, we're not flies on the wall all day, we don't see the superintendent working, so how would we know? But I think if you can have that discussion with the superintendent of, how will we know that you're achieving this goal? How will we understand? Then, my experience is the superintendent can usually talk to you about, this is the outcome you'll see, this is the impact you'll see, this is some documentation that I could show you that will help you understand, or through this presentation, you'll get a good idea of how the work is going. It also has the advantage of making sure that as that goal is carried out, or as that standard is carried out, you've had enough discussions so that as much as you can, 11 or 12 different minds are looking at it the same way, and there's not different interpretations of how that goal is going to play out, or how that standard gets implemented. Does that make sense? So as you're going through that development of the document, the superintendent goals, you want to agree on the goals and think about the outcomes. If you think about the acronym SMART, the M is for measurement, it's always easy to measure task completion, but that doesn't always let you know if you got the outcome you wanted. So when you're thinking about the statement of the goal, you want to, again, to make sure everybody's thinking about the same outcome, try and understand, how will things look different a year from now if this goal is implemented well? How, how will we know? And try and get that, again, everyone try to look at it the same way, and understand that it's not just a list of completing the tasks. There was a time a couple of years ago when a lot of superintendents had a goal of doing instructional walkthroughs. Instructional walkthroughs can have a great purpose and a great impact on the instruction that's happening in the district, but if the goal is just, I will do X number of instructional walkthroughs, you might know the superintendent's getting their 10,000 steps in, but you might not know how that's going to impact instruction in the district. So having the goal go a little bit further and be a little more specific can be really useful in understanding that the goal really does have an impact on, on what's going on in the district. After you've gotten the goals, then, as I said, go into the rubric and agree on the applicable elements. And again, don't pick too many, don't get overwhelmed by the, the elements that you pick and the number that you're gonna have to evaluate. Then you can determine the weighting of the standards if you choose. And then, again, discuss the evidence that's going to be put forward that will help you understand. That has the advantage of helping you sometimes understand what presentations you'd like to hear throughout the year. I think we've talked in the past about kind of creating that year-long agenda, so that'll help you understand what presentations are gonna come on that year-long agenda, that will show you that progress is being made all through the year on the goal and on the standards. So when you get to the end and you're evaluating, it won't be like, gee, we thought about it at the beginning, we got a little update in the middle, and now we're thinking about it again almost a year later. You'll, you, when you are sitting down to write that individual evaluation, you'll be thinking, oh, yeah, I remember, I remember. I'm, you know, you're just sort of reviewing the information that has built up for you all year, rather than seeing information for the first time. That make sense to everybody? So there are some parts, as I said, of the evaluation model that are required, and there's some that are optional. You are required to have the four SMART goals in the three areas. You're required to have a rating on all four of the standards, and then the overall summative rating that combines the two. The optional parts are that you do not need to evaluate on every single last standard indicator and element. If I can enforce again, don't. You can weight the standards differently if you pick. The timing of the cycle is up to the district, or up to the committee and the superintendent working together. Different committees have different choices. I think as we've gone through this a number of years, most committees are settling on sort of a school year evaluation, because it makes most sense in terms of the progress of the district and the goals actually being accomplished. How the evaluation is used is up to you. Raise, contract renewal, bonus, or just it's done. That is up to the committee and the superintendent to figure out in the district. And the process for completing the evaluation sometimes differs from district to district, so the way you choose to do the composite evaluation at the end is, has some flexibility that you can choose from. Any questions up to this point? Go right ahead.
So on the outcomes, you know, if I think about some of the initiatives that we might have as goals, the outcomes could be longer than a year. And so I'm wondering how you do that? Do you try to do, like, what you might see in a year and then try to, the next year, make it more of a longer-term outcome?
It is absolutely okay to have a two-year goal. And so then, at that point, then you would do exactly what you said. At the end of the first year, you would look at the progress that was made, did you meet the key actions and benchmarks of that during the first part, you know, during that first year, and are you starting to understand that progress is being made? Make sense? Anything else? Yes?
Do you have any other information or guidance around the evaluation cycle and election cycles that might take place? Because we're in a situation where our elections are in April and May, and so think about what you're about. There might be committee members coming on who don't know the performance of the superintendent, like committee members leaving.
Yeah, so districts have handled that different ways. In some places, they ask the people who may be going off or who they know are going off to complete an evaluation up until that point, before they're off, and then that's included as part of the composite. Some districts sort of have an agreement that people need to be on the committees so long before they contribute, or other committees ask the people who have come on to contribute in a minor way what their observations or what their thoughts are from the time they got on the committee until the evaluation is completed. And some stay with the, you know, the cycle of following the election cycle. So there's, yes?
I just want to comment, our practice has been actually, the people who step off are kind of willing to do it at the same time everyone else is. Now, certainly if someone were moving out of town, you might ask for them to do it, like you said, at the time, but others might still do it, you know, if we were doing June and the election was May, they'd still be willing to participate in it in June.
Yep, yeah, that's yet another iteration of what happens. Any other questions up till now? Okay. So then you get, now you've built up this wonderful body of knowledge throughout the year, so you know how the goals have been implemented, you've got the, had the evidence through the course of the year, and now it's time to sit down and complete that individual evaluation and then the composite evaluation. So when you're doing the individual evaluation, you'll have some information from the superintendent that tells either the self-assessment or some portfolio of evidence that, to review to be able to complete the evaluation. You complete your individual evaluation and it goes to someone to be compiled into a composite, whether that's the chair, whether that's an evaluation subcommittee that's formed, or a designee of the chair. That's, again, something that each committee may decide individually. It's helpful to discuss the process for completing the composite evaluation before it actually starts, just discussion maybe as, you know, as the forms for the individual evaluations are handed out. One thing that I've found is sometimes when the chair changes, a new chair will take a little different process or different method for creating the composite, and sometimes that causes some angst and confusion at the time of actually sitting down to do the evaluation, because people had an expectation different than the way it played out. So having that discussion of whoever's gonna create the composite, talking about how they're going to go through that process ahead of time can be helpful in allowing you, when you have the discussion about the evaluation, to be discussing the meat of the evaluation and not the process that got to creating the composite. Make sense? In the end, the superintendents in Massachusetts have the great pleasure of being evaluated in public, and so the composite is discussed at a public meeting and voted on by the committee. You may be aware that there's a new ruling from the SJC that might change your process. If you were, if you had a process of putting the composite evaluation in the folder and the public, and it just went to the committee before the public saw it, the composite evaluation needs to be released to the committee at the same time it's released to the public. The logic behind that is it's essentially a deliberation, so it has to be available to the public the same time it's available to everyone else. Make sense? Yes?
That may happen, or that has happened?
That has happened, yeah. So that, I mean, that, if there are no questions, that's the end of my presentation, so. I was counting on a lot of questions. Peter?
So I was overwhelmed the last time I did this, and it's because I think we were just handed the forms, and it's like, oh my god, to the point where I just, I kind of tuned out, and I don't want to do that. But I was heartened to see back on a slide you had earlier about the, this one, required and optional? Because I'm thinking that maybe it's worth us talking about putting that nasty beast some boundaries around what the instrument is gonna be, the evaluation is gonna be, and I'm just putting it out there, if we should talk about what we think we want the evaluation to look like, so that in whatever, April, May, it's not, well, it's not like it'll be dropped on us, because now we've seen it for a number of years, but at least we will have had some discussion about what it looks like. It's not a question, just thought I'd put it out there.
For the evaluation tool, that for the measurable, you know, that's usually, it's like done by survey or something like that, that the question that's included in the survey or anything like that, it's, well, kind of derive a different outcome, because really, how you ask the question, so then the result will be different. So is there any, like, a template or any information, how you put the measurable, those tools together, the questions together?
Not that I know of, not that I know of.
So usually this question is, I mean, this tool is created by the school, by the...
The superintendent and the school committee working together. Most often, the superintendent will have some goals that the superintendent recommends, based on the work that he's done in the district plan, or in this case, his entry plan, and his, you know, again, aligned to the work of the district for the year. And we'll be able to think, I mean, he's thinking about the work he's going to do, and we'll be able to talk to you about the work that he's going to do. Measurement is not always just a number either, so sometimes the measurement may be an accomplishment of something that impacts instruction, and he may be able to show you some documentation around that.
But to kind of go with the steps you said, that document development checklist and what Paul said and Angie's talking about, I think we should go right through this process, work with Peter on the goals, the elements in the rubric that we think align with those goals that we really care about, and keep it to a manageable level, and then talk about what is the evidence, talk ahead of time. And then Peter knows what to be keeping to show us. If a survey needs to get made, then we can do that, and that's all done way before the evaluation is happening, so that we know, and like even as you're hearing things, like I keep a little file, a little evaluation file through the year, because it's really hard to remember in June what happened in December and all that. But it's also lets the superintendent know the expectation right out front, so that he can be working toward that.
Sometimes what I've seen, and not to say this is the ultimate way to do it, because there's obviously a lot of different ways, but it's sort of a, if you have some of the action items laid out in the goal in sort of a Google Doc, then there's a column in the Google Doc where you're dropping links to the evidence as the year goes on, and it's very, it's not at all unusual for the school committee and the superintendent to talk about a couple different kinds of evidence, and to see more evidence actually dropped into that Google Doc as the year goes on beyond what was talked about. Yeah, sure.
So what I think you'll likely see from me is, as we go through the goals, you'll see some form of a narrative or reflection, so that there's a little bit of a story to how I've approached the work on that goal, and throughout that, I will embed links that take you to artifacts of evidence that support the work on that goal. That's something that I tend to be in the habit of doing, and I think, in all honesty, what I've found, and I can say this with experience, because this is the same evaluation tool that principals and central office leaders use with their staff, so it's something that I have a lot of experience using, and to look at an evaluation that just is a series of artifacts makes it very, very difficult to place those artifacts within the context of what the educator did. And so I think it's more about the story that the educator uses to tell around the work toward a goal. So I would just steer you toward that as an expectation, so you understand what you'll be looking at, and I think that will also help you be able to effectively evaluate the performance that I have over the year.
Any other questions for me? So these are just links to the two documents that you had in your folder. All right, thank you very much.
So a couple of things that Dorothy mentioned that I just want to comment on to you as well, because this process has been on my mind, and Diana and I have been talking a little bit to set the stage for this. One thing Dorothy referenced was a year-long agenda, to be able to help map that out. This is something that Diane and I have been working, and I've also been working with our central office team. We have a draft of a year-long agenda. There will never be a finished copy that never changes. When we do give you a year-long agenda, which is forthcoming, what you'll see is that it's a working copy that can change over time, because we know that things come up that have to be added to a school committee's plate over the course of a year. We have chosen not to give that to you yet, because what we wanted to do was have you adopt the district goals first, and then what we're planning to do, to help you better understand the work of the district, because three of my goals will be the district goals. What we're planning to do is have a series of presentations over the course of the year that are aligned to each of the district goals or action items within those district goals, and where we can also explicitly tie them back to the work of the district, so that there's really a nice package to how this works. And then as we get into the evaluation process and there's a narrative, the links will be to presentations that you've already seen throughout the year. So it's not necessarily that you're having a lot of new information piled on to you at the end of the year for the evaluative purpose. You're gonna see that throughout the year, have an opportunity to discuss it, comment, provide suggestions as we go, and then the end of the year evaluation is really just being able to tie that all together.
I'll just add that the goals arise out of the work of the district. This is really about the students, not goals per se. So the evaluation is really just, it's a way to, this is the way I look at it anyway, it's a way to be, it's a constant reminder, in my mind, to keep thinking about district goals all the way through the year. And then when I look at an agenda, there's, I mean, just the evidence just kind of floods you, basically. There's no paucity of evidence at the end of the year if everyone's thinking about the district goals and the students. So just keep that in mind as you're, it is a little overwhelming, especially having gone through this process before, to be at the end of the year and then first start thinking about collecting evidence, but if you're thinking about it periodically, or even when you're reading agendas, you'll start to see how things are working on behalf of the students of this district. Any other, oops, any other questions or comments? Okay, onward. We do have some business. Item six is statement of warrants. There are three warrants on the agenda which are being circulated. Yep, keep those going, please. We have two vendor warrants, 19-007 PR and 19-007, in the amount of $2,882,311.75, and one payroll warrant, P1907, in the amount of $2,477,569.42. We also have some minutes to approve. The first in your packet, you have the minutes for our meeting on September 20th. Beth, were there any changes to those minutes?
There were. On page four, everybody has a one-page document, and then, on page four, on 9.25, it said volunteer, and she said, she said, "I volunteer," and then under number 10, on the second half of the document, the second sentence should, I'm quoting, the vendor quotes, that changed to, "The sidewalk committee chairs less than pure barriers, so people more volunteer." The original way the committee was written, it makes it sound like it's a new committee and that's the issue.
Move to approve the amendments?
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Okay. So you're, so item 6.2 refers to the minutes of the protocol subcommittee meeting on September 17th. So typically, these are approved at the last meeting of the subcommittee, but that was not done, so rather than reconvene the subcommittee and post it 48 hours in advance and all the things you have to do to get a public meeting on rolling, we're just gonna approve them here, knowing that most, or many of you were not members of the subcommittee, of the protocol subcommittee, and were not present, so you feel free to just abstain. I just want to mention, if you have not yet signed the voted protocols, they are circulating tonight, so if you haven't signed them by the end of the meeting, please go find Beth. Once they're signed, we'll, oh, everyone signed? Okay, so Jenny still needs to sign. And if I didn't do so before, I would like to thank the five members of the protocol subcommittee, Eileen, Jenny, Tessa, Angie, Amy, for their work in revising the operating protocols. You all brought a real diversity of views to the table, which is greatly appreciated, and I'd also like to thank Superintendent Light for his insight and his guidance during this process. The subcommittee automatically dissolves after the vote. So do I, oh, do you have any changes to those minutes?
I have just a couple of changes under the discussion cover. Down in the middle, the sentence that says, the sentence says, Angie asked if there was a way to emphasize, that members must work together personally, to say, who is that to everything, instead of, you know, some basic language, as you said, coming back.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
All right, thank you. So as you can imagine, there's more than three things that happen in a large district over the course of a couple of weeks, but I'd like to highlight just a few things for you each time, so that it's not a 20-page memo, but brief and to the point. First, I just want to congratulate two of our educators in the district, Dorothy McDonald, who is the high school librarian, and Alec Lewis, who is a high school social studies teacher here. Both Dorothy and Alec are recipients of the University of Chicago, outstanding. Both Dorothy and Alec are recipients of the University of Chicago Outstanding Educator Award. So in order to receive this award, you have to be nominated. And two of our former graduates wrote letters to the University of Chicago on behalf of these two teachers. So congratulations, well-earned, and clearly both of these people made a, made a deep impact on some of our graduates. The second thing I want to talk about is one of our district administrators has been in the news lately, Dr. Don Bentley, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, recently published a blog article with the Center for Education Equity, CCE, through the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. And so the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium is one of the national regional equity centers funded by the U.S. Department of Education to promote equity in schools. And their, part of their mission reads to quote, "improve and sustain systemic capacity of public education to increase outcomes for students regardless of race, gender, religion, and national origin." So Dr. Bentley's blog post, we, she was approached by the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium to write this blog post because the district has been conducting an equity audit, and I think you've seen that in a lot of the district updates. And one of the things that the Mid-Atlantic Consortium realized is that our profile and our delve into equity has been vastly different from many, many other districts in terms of profile and demographic makeup. And also, we're one of the only high-performing districts that contacted them to be able to in, in, enter into this equity audit. So they asked, contacted her and asked her to write about her experience and the work of the district in working through this equity audit. So it's been very exciting. I provided you a link to the blog post. I think what will be nice about that, and the reason I chose to do this, if you're wondering about what this equity audit work is, this is a great resource to be able to understand the history of why the district entered into this work and also to understand what that work looks like. We will also, when it's available, be releasing to you a copy of a webinar that Dr. Bentley and also three of our other educators participated in. So I also want to thank Dana Lab, who's the principal at Blanchard Memorial School. David Green is our high school social studies department chair, and Heather Haines is our pre-K through six math coordinator. They also participated in this webinar with Dr. Bentley for the CCE. So it's really great work. I hope you're able to take some time and watch it, but at least be able to read that blog post and get a good historical perspective on equity work of this district. I will say about equity work, we are not done yet. We're not there. It's something that's going to be years and years and years in the making. Equity work is a slow process. And ultimately, you know, we've been focusing, as you can see from previous district improvement plans, a lot of the focus has been on the adults in the district and providing our teachers with high-quality professional development, particularly through the SEED program around recognizing bias and implicit bias. And what we're going to be moving to do over the next year to two years is continue to bring that work and make sure the students are the forefront of that work as well. So for example, and it's not in our improvement plan this year because we're a year away, but we're exploring the possibility of bringing in the Anti-Defamation League to be able to provide the World of Difference Program at the high school, which is a student-led program to give students the capacity to lead discussions around bias with their peers. So that's something that we're hoping to be able to have the initial discussions on this year and provide the training over the summer and into the fall of next year so we can get that program up and running. So things are just starting in the works. We have multiple steps to be able to get there, and we have to know if the ADL has capacity to get our district on board, but it's something we're exploring. So I just wanted to give you a little sense of where we are and also where we're headed. And the last update I have for you is around sidewalk safety. This has been a topic of discussion. You know, early in the year, I updated you that we had a very, very serious accident that involved one of our high school students. A number of members of our community have been working with the town of Acton to promote more sidewalk safety, particularly at crosswalks. And so we met recently with the town manager for Acton, as well as the, and I, I believe it was the DPW director, and I'm failing to see that exactly, but it was also the chief of police and deputy chief of police. And we were just really discussing ways that we can work with the town to increase sidewalk safety. We're particularly looking at that one intersection where the accident occurred to start, and we're looking at putting up some temporary signage while the town is looking at a traffic study of the area to determine more long-term approaches, whether they're kind of light-up crosswalk signs, things like that. But what we're looking to do is coordinate efforts with the town so there's a similar look and feel, whether it's on campus or off campus, so that cars and pedestrians both know what that is. Simultaneously, J.D. Head was meeting with our insurer, who is MIA, which is kind of the statewide insurer for public entities. And they provided him with a brochure on pedestrian safety. So we thought we would send that out in the packet both to you, and we'll be sending that out to the community as well subsequent to the meeting. So just want to thank both the town officials and also J.D. and school officials for being able to participate in that and really keep it, focus on an important topic.
Yep. Eileen.
Thank you, Peter, for that kind of very wonderful updates. And, you know, for my three years of, you know, school committee experience, I think that's the really most wonderful superintendent update I've heard. And it's one about, you know, promotion of the teacher. And one is about, you know, one of our educator who can give us a really summary of our district work. One is about our student safety. And that's really, I very appreciate of all those work you've done right now for our district. Thank you so much.
Just quickly, I'll say thank you, but I also have to deflect that a little bit because I didn't do the work. It's really our educators in the district that are doing all of this work. I get to sit up and smile and take credit for it, which I will gladly do, don't get me wrong. But I really want to just make sure they're the ones receiving the credit for this. So thank you.
Peter, but you know, this is so wonderful because we're seeing the trend and the work is not done by you, but you're the leader. Thank you.
I have a question on the sidewalk study. Will that be in conjunction and looking at the, the bus stop? And because when the kids goes from home, they, when they walk to their bus stop, whether there are a sidewalk there and for the safety of the student, will that be conjunction when you, when the sidewalk committee looking at where to improve?
So the traffic study we discussed was very specific to the intersection of Hayward Road and Jefferson Road. You know, traffic studies cost a substantial amount of money as well, so I think they need to be very limited in scope to have the impact. And what they want to look at is traffic patterns and look at, you know, appropriate locations for signage, track speed limits of car, you know, actual speeds of cars versus speed limits, and be able to really determine a long-term approach. So I don't want to give an impression that it's more expanded than that. So no, this one is really, what we discussed at least, was very limited to this. I'm not sure what the town is doing in regards to bigger sidewalk projects.
I'm sure you're aware that in the last year or two, we've had a couple of kids hit by cars around campus. So I was happy to hear that you met with town leaders, but I think this is one of those things that I, I would love to hear about again because, you know, we've had several serious accidents in the last couple of years in Acton around school. And I think that follow-through is, is, would be terrific around this. Thank you.
Absolutely. We can come back to that. And I would anticipate we'd be coming back anyway. One other thing we're doing, we're also meeting with the Kelly's Corner staff of Acton, who have been working on the Kelly's Corner proposal. And we actually did a site walk of that with district administrators, including administrators from the high school and junior high school, looking at kind of where students tried to cross the various roads, and looked at placement of crosswalks, sidewalk configuration. There was some discussion of trying to add traffic lights at the end of Charter Road and the intersection of one eleven to help traffic patterns there because I think there's a recognition that that's a dangerous area. I anticipate that the town will be trying to move that forward again this spring. So that's something to stay tuned with. I think, you know, our role is not necessarily to tell people how to vote on that issue, but certainly what we want to do is be able to work with the town to make sure that things are being planned with our students in mind.
I think there were over two hundred kids between Dunk and Donuts and Sorrento's this afternoon with the half-day. And it's just a poorly laid-out area. I'm, I'm grateful for this work, and I, I really hope we carry through with it. Thank you.
I found the same thing. I tried to get a burrito today, and it just did not work well.
On your second item with respect to equity, I'm curious to hear that we're, we're kind of unique in our, you know, pursuing this effort, given our demographic. And I, I'm, I'm curious that other, other school districts have already addressed equity? Or are we behind? Or what, what's the story behind that one?
So I, we're not, we're not behind at all. I think we're probably more on the cutting edge of talking about equity seriously for high-performing districts. I think a lot of the equity work that's been done nationally is in large urban settings. And there's a different demographic profile that comes with that. And usually, it's when there are significant performance issues that districts decide to get into serious equity work to uncover where the performance issues lie in a district. I think in a community that has typically had very, very high performance, some of the equity work can fall by the wayside a little bit. But I think what's been so impressive, and it certainly was actually something that attracted me to this district, was the commitment of the educators here over several years to really bring this work to the forefront. So I would definitely not characterize it that we're behind. I think, given the profile of the district, we're at the forefront of this.
And I just, I'm not, I'm probably one of like many, many people who were really, really eager to get the update. I was really, really happy to see it, really wondering what is, what is this equity stuff about? And, and the link is really, really a great first glance at it. So if you, if you haven't had time to access the link, I highly recommend you do so. It's great work. Okay. Moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. Eileen.
I just checked them, FYI, about the safety. I think I really concern about, you know, we have that whole page is talk about educate, educate the driver and our kids. I don't know if that whole poster can be talked in the school. I really, I don't know. I, I don't know if you understand what I'm talking about, but it's the FYI item. It's talk about, give the kids a good habit to go across the street to protect themselves. So the FYI alarming, what it says, alarming dangers in school zones. I hope we can talk about that in school. That's, I, I don't know if that possible?
It is my understanding, we actually do pedestrian safety in elementary school with kids. I, I, I believe that that's the case, although I'm new enough that I could be wrong. But I believe that's the case. But we're also going to be sending that flyer home to families tomorrow so that parents can share that with kids as well.
Angie?
Just follow up that, may I suggest also that we send our, like, the bus route? And because in my understanding, at the town level, there is a sidewalk committee putting together. So if they have our, like, bus route and bus stop information, when they take into the sidewalk consideration, they will take, they have that information. Thank you.
Can you elaborate on that? The bus route?
Because it is my understanding that some of the bus stops, and when the kids coming walk from their house to the bus stop, there's no sidewalk. There's some of the kid, they have, may have to walk on the main street. So it's kind of dangerous for the kids to walk on the street. So there's, if there's no sidewalk from the, for the kids to walk from their house to the bus stop. So if they have that kind of information, when the sidewalk committee putting together, they will take into consideration. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item six is, is, is it, no, eight, I'm sorry. School, okay, let me start again. Item eight is our, the school district two thousand eighteen, nineteen goals. We're looking for, this is a second read, and we are looking for your vote this evening. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve?
Jenny, I think she beat you to it by like a half a second. Yeah. Okay. Discussion? Angie.
For the, I have the question on the district goal number one. So the, the first one is to gather data to monitor the impact, the changes, start time at each level. So the first, the one-tier bus changes is triggered by the start time. So will there be any study that focus on the impact of bus change?
I think we'll be collecting information from all of our students around start times, and I think the bus element is certainly a piece of that that we'll be collecting. I don't think it's a separate piece of it because the start times and bus times were so intricately linked together. So yes, you know, I also know that I'm saving every piece of email that I get around buses and transportation and everything else. So I actually think we already have a wealth of data.
Paul.
I, I see in that evidence and measures, there is bus ridership data. Is that, does that answer that question?
I guess, yes and no. I don't know the, yeah. So just make sure that we have the, you know, there, because there, I think there's still a lot of voices from the community for the changes. So we want to make sure that we collect the information from the community that to reflect the, the one-tier bus changes to the fact. I think it's kind of overwhelming. We have heard from this community of twice already that kids and the student like, and also the family really love the change of the start time, but the one-tier bus changes there has a, some impact on the, a lot of families. So we may want to look into the data of that. Thank you.
Michael.
Yeah. Back to what Angie said, because I also, you know, saw some discussions in the community about the, the bus stops that cut by this, just due to this single tier. So maybe want to put this one into the review as well, so if possible. Thank you.
Eileen.
I have some question on goal number one, too. I'm sorry I was not here last time. So for the, for the goal one, the evidence and the measures, there is, our goal before, I think, is always mention the family fun time and family reading time. There is some question for me is, reading is fun, why not accept reading? Other things are not fun at all. That's some kind of things really puzzle me. I think in some other family, maybe doing some math games and something other than reading. Reading is part of it. Why not anything else come? We can maybe include a little bit more things inside there. We, our measure, evidence measuring is just saying family newsletter and the communication dedicated to read. Is that really the very narrow range of the evidence and the measures? That's, that's my question.
That, so just a comment on that. That's actually a good catch, and I wanted to mention this specific goal action anyway. There was some discussion around this goal action. We received some feedback around broadening this idea of reading, that it wasn't just about reading books, there's other media. So we discussed that internally, and what we realized is, we didn't, this is actually a goal around social-emotional learning. It was not a reading goal. And when we wrote the goal, we accidentally made it focus more on reading. It really is not about reading. The, the purpose of this goal action was actually to work with families to help provide kids with more education around appropriate screen time overall, and good uses of screen time, inappropriate uses of screen time, social media, education, things like that. And it just was not written clearly. So we actually amended the strategic goal action language to better reflect that, and we took reading out of there. It should actually, we should have taken reading out of that next column as well, and it should really just be family newsletters as our communication vehicle for this. So I would actually propose that we just strike anything after family newsletters, or we could put communication, but eliminate dedicated to reading because this is not a reading goal, it's a social-emotional learning goal. So I apologize for that confusion. So, I apologize for that confusion.
Can I just add that, if I remember correctly, reading for enjoyment was part of the plan when we took away required reading logs and required reading in school and drop-in reading and things like that, with the intent that reading could become potentially a pleasurable activity for downtime and playtime and just, just like rejuvenating yourself at home for those for whom reading does that. So, I can, I understand why it got here, it landed here. I just wanted to let people know the background for that.
I guess I had the benefit of kind of the pretext to understand that the reading was just the vehicle for achieving what we wanted out of that goal. So, but I, with that understanding, I have no problem with the edit.
Okay. Oh, Angie? Yep.
Yeah, actually, I know that, I actually brought this up last time, which is the goal number one, understanding and respond to our students' social-emotional needs. Underneath there, there is the two primary thing, which is the school start time changes and also the homework policy. So, I guess that, of course, I understand that we're trying to focus these two for this year. And maybe you can help me to understand a little bit more process and for the student wellness. And I think you mentioned that it started at the challenge success survey, and so this are the two focus area. So, maybe you can elaborate a little bit over the process of now we're getting the data, what's the next step? And how are we gonna kind of reevaluate from here and next?
Sure. So, the history with a lot of the work in this goal is the district administered some surveys to our students a number, about two years ago, I believe, and Marie, correct me if I'm wrong. But that data highlighted a couple significant areas. And the most significant area that came out of that was that our students were sleeping less than about any other high-performing district that the survey creator had seen. And this is a national survey administered out of Stanford University. It's called Challenge Success, and I know a lot of you are familiar with that. But, so, the work out of that, it was really decided to focus on homework and sleep for students. And that really drove a lot of the work of the district. And I think what we're really trying to do this year, we've implemented major, major changes around homework, and we've implemented some significant changes around sleep and start times. And one thing we know about good implementation plans and change theory is that if you implement a change, and then you don't take the time to monitor the progress and make adjustments based on the feedback you're receiving, the change that you implemented is likely not to have the impact you wanted to have. And so, what we're trying to do with this goal is not add additional new work until we're sure that the changes we made are having the impact we hoped that they had. And so that we don't give up on those too early. So, it looks like it's that we're not doing a lot within the goal, but the changes were so significant that they require a lot of attention and effort to make sure that they're having the impact we want them to have.
And as it pertains to that goal and the work of the district, as I understand it, understood it last year, the high school was looking at assessment very seriously, and I think also talking about homework. And I don't think that was something that came back around to us in terms of what they're thinking after the year-long study around assessment. And I think that, as it pertains to this goal, I just want to reassert that it would be really great to hear what the high school is doing, because I think that we all saw a direct change in elementary schools. But we're very, I'm very interested in learning what the high school has done post-assessment study, post-new homework policy. I don't think we've heard enough about that.
We will make sure that that's, those are topics that the high school talks about when they come into their presentation. The other topic that the high school has been working on for a year or so has been a schedule change. So, they piloted some possible schedules last year. What we're also trying to do is make sure that when the high school comes to present to you, that those are some of the topics that you're going to hear about. So, definitely, I think that's a great, great comment. And I know that was echoed by a couple different people in their comments to us.
So, after the first read, I heard, I was absorbing everything that was said, I went to the wellness website. So, if you go to the Families tab, and it shows up A B Wellness website, and click on that, and I just kind of meandered around in there and found some, like a summary of a professional learning initiative or event that happened at the high school, February 2nd, 2017. There's a link to that. And it was on workload and assessment at the high school. So, there is like, this is, the way I look at these goals, there, these are the targets that we've selected that pertain to social-emotional needs. But they're just like three little pieces, oh, they're big pieces, of a larger wellness puzzle. We care about many more of the puzzle pieces, and they're there. We haven't pulled them out and put them on here, because as Superintendent Leida said, we want to assess the impact of what we're doing before we go on to other things. So, really at the beginning of a longer journey. And I think the goals have to be seen in that context. Amy, and then Paul.
I just want to say that I, and on, piggybacking on that, I really appreciate the way that the goals have been narrowed down, and they're not overwhelming. This is, this is something that we have dealt with and that had to deal with in the past. And I really appreciate that you focused in on key things, understanding there's tremendous amount of work going on outside of these things. But I appreciate that you really, really limited to things that we actually can accomplish and do well.
I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, the puzzle pieces that we're focusing on, they weren't randomly selected. They were as a result of surveys that showed anomalies in certain areas that, and these puzzle pieces that we're addressing are a direct result of the surveys that were done. So, I think this is, these are good goals.
We'll take one more question, Angie.
Okay, sure. Just want to follow up on Maya's comment, which is the high school, that it is my understanding that for the high school homework, and because I was reading at the high school homework policy right now, that it's kind of, the student should expect homework in one or more subject nightly. And what I heard from the high school is more of the evenly distribution of the homework on a daily basis, not at the burst, which is kind of like homework coordination. So, I was wondering that in the implementation of a homework policy, will that perspective be considered into when we doing, taking the survey data?
So, I think, you know, if you look at the evidence and measures that we're doing, you know, we've implemented a homework policy now for a little over a year. And our goal is, that we're setting for ourselves, is we're going to actually be giving surveys out to each stakeholder group. I think what we need to do is continue the process, survey the stakeholders, including our students, and then hear the feedback from them, and be able to come back to you with, we've now, here's what the feedback said, here's what we're intending to do with the feedback, and here's the changes that you should see happen next. So, that's really the function of what we're trying to accomplish this year, is get to that data on a widespread perspective.
Okay, seeing no other discussion. All in favor? Oh, did you, oh, I'm sorry, I should probably acknowledge public participation at this point. I'm sorry, John, come on up.
There we go. Okay, John Peterson, Jackson Drive. Now we're legit. I just wanted to comment that under the responsible party for these goals, in some cases, many people are listed. You know, so for example, if you look at the bottom of page two, you can see, here's, you know, a clean goal in that the responsible party is the communication, community education director, so we know that's Erin Batez, so we know she's doing it. And ultimately, at some point, we would expect Erin Batez to report back on how this had gone. Obviously, in terms of responsibility, responsibility is in fact broad for many of these activities. Nonetheless, in terms of the way this will ultimately be reported back out to the superintendent, and then perhaps through the superintendent to the committee, or perhaps reported back directly to the committee by the parties who are involved, it would seem to me that a supporting document underneath this that made it clear that when we said principals for such and such activity, the principals would in fact be led by this person, so that there was a clear division of labor, you know, and work amongst the various goals, and there was more clear responsibility, I think would be worthwhile. And likewise, you know, with respect to the deliverable, you know, if there's a report, and that's going to be the deliverable, that's great. If there's going to be a PowerPoint, and that's the deliverable, that's going to be great. But it would be good to also know that underneath the goals, there had been some definition of the deliverables. Thank you.
Ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item nine, subcommittee reports. Mary, do you have anything from the building committee?
Just quickly to let everyone know that the visioning sessions have begun. You were all invited to attend at least one or one of them. So, if you are, if you said yes, make sure you go. They're in the admin building in the old Danny's place, little auditorium there. And then the summary day was actually coupled very conveniently with the day we're going to visit the schools, which I believe is October 15th. So, no, sorry, 16th, sorry. And then I am doing the Building Project 101 on Monday evening at 7:00 PM, place to be determined. I'll let you know by email, but that we did agree on a time for that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the, Monday, next Monday? As in the 8th?
Yes.
It's Monday, the 8th, correct?
And really, we don't want a quorum. It's really for people who really weren't paying attention when it was all happening. Hopefully, you were.
Okay, budget report, Amy.
Okay, so, budget met last Tuesday. We did a little discussion on FY19. There aren't really any significant updates. Dave is going to be giving a budget 101 for new members, to be determined. So, look for that. One thing that we did talk about was the, one of the biggest challenges that we're facing around, facing, is around the busing and the fact that it is so hard to find and retain drivers. So, the administration has been working on some various strategies to incentivize more people to become drivers and to stay with the district. So far, all three dispatchers in the main office have been having to drive every day. So, that also is probably why it's been difficult to get in touch with people at the office. We also took a look at the preliminary timeline for FY20 budget process, but nothing more to come out later about that. And you want me to do policy, too?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead with policy?
Questions about budget, I guess? Okay. So, policy, the policy subcommittee met yesterday. This is our first meeting, and it was really an introduction for new members to what happens in these meetings, where and how policies originate, policies versus procedures, how our policies are organized on the website, and how they are developed collaboratively with the subcommittee, with appropriate administrators and staff, and in accordance with Massachusetts general law. And we did set the dates for future policy meetings, and briefly looked at a list for the most pressing policies to come up this year. Briefly, very briefly, just a little list. Let me do FinCom, too? I'm just, I just keep going. There, well, FinCom's easy, because they didn't meet. The next meeting is Tuesday, October the 9th, unless Christine has anything to add. Okay.
So, I know the capital planning committee has not yet met, so, do you have any? Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, capital planning committee, we are meeting next Wednesday, just prior to the building committee meeting, so 6:00 PM. We'll meet in this room. We are excited, we are being joined by two of our FinCom members from each, or one from each community. Jason Cole is going to be representing Acton, and Gary Kushner is going to be representing Boxborough. We'll also have staff. I was able to review some of the preliminary work that SCANSCA has done for us to date. As you recall, I, excuse me, it's getting to that hour where I can't talk anymore evidently. I contracted with SCANSCA to actually review the draft plan and to do a number of things for us, to look for efficiencies within the draft plan, to make sure that pricing was done accurately, to package the plan in such a way that we can maximize our bid capacity and lower our costs as we go into the process of implementing the plan, and to develop this into something that not only looks at the five-year plan and the commitment of the committee for a million dollars over five years, but we know that there's a gap beyond that to get to really what, I think Bill last year ended at about an eleven and a half million dollar total capital improvement need. And so, we need to explore how we can get to the rest of that work done. So, SCANSCA is advising us on all of that. And I think by hiring a professional project manager, we're able to make sure that the work that we do is accurate and reflects real costs, real needs, and is packaged in such a way to maximize the work that we can get done. So, we will hopefully have an update from SCANSCA on that at that meeting, and be able to talk initially about some ideas about just strategic approaches we can use. So, we're excited to finally get that project rolling.
Great, thank you. Item 10, school committee member reports. So, Amy, you already gave ALG. Is there a BLF update? Oh, you, oh, whoops, okay. No, you didn't, did you? Okay, I'm sorry. So, Paul, do you want to give an ALG update?
ALG, the big item is the finance committee came up with a draft point of view. And I think they may be voting on it when they meet next. And then we talked about process, and that's all the news that's fits to report.
BLF?
So, I was there. I would just draw your attention, there's materials in the packet from the last meeting, and of most import is the budget schedule. And they have a budget Saturday for BOS and FinCom on January 5th, and then, which I think they did last year and liked the way that worked. And then they've added one this year on February 2nd, which is capital Saturday, and they're going to review the capital plan articles. So, I think that because our capital's within our budget, it's, you know, we don't need to attend that, but it's just good to know. And as we think about kind of the collaborative approach to long-term planning on capital, it's good to know.
So, I'm just scanning down the liaison assignment. So, I know that PTSO met. Tess, did you want to mention anything about that meeting?
Sure, we met the other night for the first time, and had a lot of new members, which was great. Peter was able to join us, and people shared out things that they had found, people that had been on the committee for a while or were rejoining, shared out things that they found valuable, and others that had just joined, shared what they were looking forward to gaining, and it was a good meeting. And we're, I think, continuing to meet on the first Monday of every month.
Okay, any other reports? Jenny?
I did meet with Jamie Eldridge, our state senator, and he shared a lot of things with me. The top few are that Governor Baker, for those of you who don't know, added an amendment to the civics bill that was passed by the legislature, which was supposed to maybe be implemented in the seventh grade, eighth grade, seventh grade this year. And because of that, it got sent back to the legislature. So, the earliest it will unfortunately be implemented will be next year for seventh graders. Also, he just updated me in depth, if anybody wants to hear about the foundation budget and the work that's going to be, as you all know, that didn't get done before the end of the year on July 30th, 31st. And he's, he and many other legislators are very eager to take that up as soon as possible, and really hope to get a, something together, especially after the election, which he Also, uh, he just updated me, uh, in depth, if anybody wants to hear, uh, about the foundation budget and the work that's gonna be, as, as you all know, that didn't get done before the end of the, the year on July 30th, 31st. And, um, he's, he and many other legislators are very eager to take that up as soon as possible and really hope to get a, um, something together, especially after the election, which, um, he thinks might change a lot of the dynamics in the State House, so.
Yep, Paul, did you want to?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Curious, um, if that foundation amendment, uh, was to incorporate joint commission recommendations?
Correct, I, I might be misspeaking, it was the three priorities to, uh, to fund special education circuit breaker, the English language learners and, um, then the, uh, the high-needs individuals and to, to try to get state funding to a more realistic level and understanding the stress that all these things are putting on local school districts. So, he's working really hard on that, it was a great meeting.
Terrific, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. No more business? Move to? You do? Okay.
No, I just want to highlight a couple things in the FYI. Just a couple FYI, uh, items to highlight for you. One, the memorandum of understanding, in case anyone's wondering why that's included. Um, the attorney general's office, uh, last year, developed a draft template that they expected all districts across the state to adopt as the template for the memorandum of understanding, so it required some revisions on the part of our district's memorandum. That actually is done through the district attorney's office in cooperation with the police departments in each community, so we're just including those as an FYI, but this is a template that we receive, it's really just an expectation, um, that we complete the template and send it back in. So, that's done. That will be added to the policy manual, uh, as an exhibit. And then, the other one I want to highlight for you is the Don't Worry Alone Stories of Hope, it's a community art show, um, and Sources of Hope, which is October 24th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the gallery at Village Works and that's sponsored by AB Cares, which, if you're not aware, is one of our partners, um, supporting the work that we do around mental health in the community. So, if you're available, please attend, should be great. It's October 24th from 6:30 to 8:30.
Do I hear a motion to, oh, Beth, we just can't get out here tonight. Oh. Yeah, so M double I, yeah. Oh, thank you. Okay, thank, thanks for that. Michael?
Uh, okay, Peter, I have a quick question about this, um, this program, uh, working with police departments. So, for the SRO and the SRL and, uh, how do we want to finance it? I mean, you know, how they, who's going to pay, pay this, those positions?
I want to make sure I understand the question was who pays?
Yeah, so, so like, school, school district is going to pay for this SRO and S, um, called SRO or, you know, each town will pay? How, how, how do, how do we want to finance it, so?
The school resource officers are paid for by the police departments.
Okay.
Um, so, Boxborough actually doesn't have an assigned, assigned SRO, but they do have specific SROs, but they do have police that work with the schools more closely. Acton actually has, I believe, three school resource officers that they've assigned to the schools and the police department funds those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Good night, everyone.